Welcome everyone here tonight. Still working to reach high funds to get them like we want. So the down here is for hand up, let's know. First thing would be right to ask, Mr. Jones, is he good? Can you say this prayer or something?
Much pray. Goodbye Father, we come to you this season. Good thanks for your mercy today. Thank you for your grace and power. I'm looking for a prayer. Ask for all those that's affected. My Sylvia and my family, Carol, Penny, my best boy. Other than Jared, Stan, Tim, Cooper, Smother, my best friend, Alfa, Hollard, my husband, my best friend. It's my brother Robinson, brother, my best friend. My family of Lance Foley and Jake Wood, family of my best friend. And Tom, my best friend. But we just ask you if it's the last one night. Let us do everything you will, Father. Do the service for us.
Okay, first one, we're getting out of here in Similes. Hope everyone, everyone wants to change. Look open all this. Do I have a motion? Second? Discussion? All right. Uh, got permission to use the high of the Tennessee project on town. You know, Frank. I hope you all have changed your mind also. Uh, just there, uh, a lot of much on to do back. I think we're good. Outset. Any discussion? Discussion? All right. Next time is a certain thing is action. We're not actually, we're not questioning. Not going on to, uh, UBS. People who purchase food. They say they ain't paying for two bucks. And we didn't announce when I went and had, uh, some of the supplies. Uh, glad most of the way.
Hello.
Um, taking discussion?
Good.
Okay, uh, all right. Let's keep that side. How everybody go, uh, here we start with, uh, with John.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That many?
Yeah.
Uh, good. Okay, um, let's go on to UBS. This Adam Lee, this is renovation of the, of the jail week. Uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, turn this over to Mr. Randy. Please, please, uh, Cheryl, uh, this, uh, Moore and, uh, Michelle.
Uh, definitely. Luke Lee. Yeah. Mike Lee. You know. Children, people, folks, they really, really, uh, we have a lot more than we can talk through. Calling what we do. But since I'm here. Good, please. It's just really, really bad change. Everything from new stuff, fun. I know there's a lot of names that are trying. But we need outside. Starting with those, uh, three, we do the, uh, vision. I'm, I'm doing, uh, this right here. Once you do this, it's get after you, it's kind of another one of those, kind of, kind of work. And it's like, it's like, it might a whole lot more force if it's not full.
How much food you think you're handing out comparatively if you had a full of students here? I mean, if you.
Not very many.
Fifty percent?
No, sir, not very many at all.
It's one, that's one thing that bothers her and it's hurting her department because
Yes.
we're not feeding as many students as we was, you know, when we're trying to do everything we can to get to them.
We're actually working on another plan, starting after Christmas, to provide a food to maybe go home to students daily, uh, but that's in the works and we have, we're just working on that.
She has to get a lot of approval on things that she does, it's just outside the norm.
Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do with the state.
It'd be good if we could get more food out, if we can make it accessible, you know?
Yes, we are working on that. We actually had a small managers meeting with a few schools today, planning to finish those tomorrow. Work with the principals on Thursday about that and try just to get the logistics to start after Christmas.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Smith, if you've got anything else you'd like to?
I, I don't want anybody getting any questions from me.
Any more questions from anybody on what's going on, how we're doing this?
I understand, I understand that we're, what y'all doing and everybody following CDC guidelines. And, uh, you're doing a good job with it, uh, but it's, it's not only in this school system, but in the state, it keeps spreading and spreading. Um, I was looking at the idea of, uh, everybody wearing masks, what, what do you, how do you feel about that?
That's. I don't, I guess I'm not trying to be politically correct, I don't, you know, you've got.
I want you to understand.
You've got one group, you know, that, you know, it's about sixty, forty, you got sixty percent don't think you should, you got forty percent think you should.
I understand that, you know, people get ideas in their head and they, they only want to listen to things that correspond with that idea. And it's kind of like in law enforcement, it's a fight or flight type of deal. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we make mask mandatory after Christmas for everybody inside the school system.
I like where we're going with that.
Make that motion, yes, sir.
And we, just whatever we do, I think we need to be reunited on it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for the sake of having it open on the table now where we can have a discussion around that with it.
All right, got a, got a motion, got a second, Mr. Lewis.
Is this, is this, are we gonna have a discussion first?
We're having, have a discussion right now. Would you like to start?
Well, I'm talking about, us over in my district, you milk and we got what grade old girl, one through?
Pre-K two.
Yeah, and we're not seeing, you're not seeing it over there like you're seeing at the bigger school, right? Now, are you, you're not seeing?
We're not, we're not seeing it in any of the, of the earlier grades overall, and I think that's across the country, if you look statistically speaking, you know.
Where do you, where do you think you see it break at? High school?
You're, you're probably, really your high school, your junior high up, we, I don't have it like broken down, so I don't want to give them, throw out misinformation out there, but just if I was thinking off the top of my head, it really starts to start hitting seventh, eighth grade, and then they're really contracting the virus more as far as symptoms at the high school level.
People's getting it and they don't know that got, you know, that's how it's getting spread.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, they probably, uh, they're probably in a higher infected rate in our older students, but they're not, they're asymptomatic, they're not showing, but they're, then they're carrying it.
So what's the discipline if you got a second grader and you can't make him work, you don't send him home?
That's, that's, that's what I need guidance on from Jamie down to you guys.
Keep telling.
Because it's gonna be, or, you know, it will be a challenge, I'm not gonna say it's not to keep it on and.
Or, or, or younger, or teachers that are teaching the younger kids, they're, they're already having it hard enough. Uh, you start putting mask mandate, a kindergarten teacher is not gonna be able to keep twenty kids with a mask on. It's, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not gonna happen.
Kindergarten teacher's not gonna be able to teach if they're sick.
They're not gonna teach if they're running around telling them to put a mask on either, so.
You know, you got people, you know, that, you know, that, it's, they got it undermined, you're not gonna make anybody ask the above. And I understand that, but people's gotta put things aside, look at the numbers, like today's Tennessee, uh, with the number one state, United States per capita in the COVID. We're number one. That's not a real proud statistic to be number one.
Have we got those in, have we got the better filters, the N ninety, is it the ninety-four, ninety-five, is that what you would be putting on the?
Well, I don't, I don't think if you did that, you could mandate a mask.
N ninety-five mask.
It'd be a face covering, I would think.
A cloth cover. N ninety-five mask, it, it keeps you from reading the name and it'll keep you from putting out problems. It's still, they still go through that narrative about.
The N ninety-five mask actually requires you to be medically.
Trained and.
Trained, you have to be signed off and approved by physician to wear, we don't have anyone, I mean.
It would, it would have to be what's called a face covering, correct?
We play distributed in ninety-five, uh, district.
Don't you, are you saying the positive out fa- effect of being not yours, not as crowded? And then the, the cleaning in between the students, like they're coming one day, then they're not coming the next day, they're coming Wednesday, I don't know how the rotation is, but isn't that being a positive effect right now?
Oh, I think it's absolutely, it's a start, uh, uh, we've done the right thing there because I think you'd be, I really think you'll start seeing your numbers going other way because not only has enough people got it, antibodies are built up and so on, but, but that was a positive step. What we did that really cut down because it's allowing us not only to, to space, but even if I've got it, it's keeping me from infecting others, and I think we're gonna see the dividends of that coming.
Can I ask your question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And I, I guess I will ask this of, of, of you, Mr. Director and our, and our attorney. Now, we, we've got a policy in place dealing with procedures around COVID. And, and our policy, and I, I want you to correct me, Mr. Wayne, if I get on off track here. Our, our policy that, that the board has passed was based on, uh, the CDC guidelines, is that correct?
At the time, yes, sir.
Pretty much modeled after CDC guidelines. So, after my next question, and, and I guess I'm being devil's advocate or whatever, but I'm just trying to be completely open, I think. It, within CDC guidelines and our policy, about the only thing that we have not implemented in attempting to control this would be the mask that CDC recommends, am I correct?
Yes, sir, I think you, there's a recommendation for masks, but what the motion that's before the board is what would be termed a mask mandate.
Right.
That would require that on your campuses.
But I guess my question is, is that, in, 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 of course, the director and, and all the principals and the employees and everybody are doing an, an amazing job. I mean, there's so many schools that are falling apart, you know, the counties outside of ours, and I, I can't compliment y'all enough to, for being able to keep us open in the way that we are, because it's extraordinarily precarious. But, but my question is, is that about the only remaining recommendation of the CDC that we have not adopted as policy? Is that about the only thing left is, is going to a mask, is somebody?
That's all of that, is that, is there anything else you think I've written?
That's about the only thing left that we have not attempted yet to slow it down, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but everything else within CDC guidelines, we have adopted and we're in place and we're trying, correct?
And we have adopted the new guidelines that come out in December before, which allow students to now test on days six or seven and get a negative and come back to school sooner, or they can stay out of ten day quarantine and come back on the eleventh day without testing. Both of those do require they wear a mask at school, and we have, um, when we call parents, we do tell them that by choosing one of those options and not staying out the full fourteen day recommended quarantine, which the CDC still recommends that is their number one option of staying out the full fourteen days. And they do have to wear a mask to come back to school. So, and parents are aware of that when we call them, and we've had several that have done those options.
And, and the whole, and the entire point of my question, if you, y'all will give me the gravity to continue for just a moment, is, and I realize it is not a popular thing, I, I understand that. Uh, I, I wear one all the time, and it, and it's awkward and it makes things difficult, I put my glasses on, I can't see anything, it's all, it's all that. But the popular and, and trying to be methodical about managing something may not necessarily be the same thing all the time. So, if, I guess my question, I, I've been playing devil's advocate and rest of the board members, I'd like to hear from all of them as well, I'm, I'm not saying I'm endorsing whatever, but if the CDC is the standard that we're following, and the CDC is the guide and the shining light that we're trying to utilize in our school system to protect everyone, however, that portion of it we're ignoring, are we doing our due diligence by leaving that portion of it out? That's, that's what I'm wondering, I'm not saying I'm yes or I'm no, I'm just asking the question, it's kind of hard to. It's like, here's the CDC and we're gonna do all of it except this, so are we doing our due diligence or we not doing it? So, I'd, I'd love to hear what the other board members think about that.
I'm gonna chime in on this, uh, you said we're trying to do everything we do to follow the CDC guideline. Also, the CDC guideline also says if you maintain a six foot distance in between somebody, you don't have to have a mask on. So here's my question to the principals and to the director of school, now that we've gone to, uh, a hybrid schedule and we got, should have the students spaced out, are the students sitting in a classroom six feet apart?
Yes, in most cases, but when.
For most, but not all, because you don't, you don't have the facilities to do that, but for the most part, yes.
Well, it looks like to me that if he's following the, the guidelines, if the students could maintain a six foot distance in between other students, or they wouldn't have to wear a mask. But once that child got up and went in line to go somewhere, out to play or something, it was like they would have to put the mask back on. So, kind of where I'm going with this is, I'm kind of like Mr. Lewis here, I'm not sitting here saying that I'm gonna vote that we're gonna mandatory masks and you're gonna wear them. Of course, if you work where I work, you have no choice, you have to wear it, or you get disciplined, action against you. Uh, I'm not gonna say that, but could we look for like a hybrid method? Uh, if you did have a classroom that possibly the students were six foot apart and you weren't gonna invade that space, you wouldn't have to wear a mask, but possibly when you get out of that car and you're going into school, you have to have that mask on, because here's what you get, if you, if you mandate the mask a hundred percent, odds are we're gonna have to supply some masks, because some, some people will probably bring their own mask, but some people probably won't have masks. And, uh, we'd have to provide that. I think passing in the hallway, uh, and I, and most schools might do this, I don't know, they might have masks on now, uh, then again, they might not. Uh, so, I could see where the mask helped, I'm a firm believer in the mask. I think, I think it does help, uh, of course, like I said, we've been mandated all the way back since April to wear masks, so, you know, me and my wife wears masks. Uh, I think they do help, I, I'm not sitting here saying they're not, but at the same time, I'm not, I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't make them wear them, and I'm not saying we shouldn't make them wear them, I think I ought to at least try to look and see if, if we're going in and out of the schools or we're going down the hallways, maybe we ought to wear masks. And if we can social distance or six foot, maybe that's an opportunity, don't wear masks.
Well, now, one, one thing we need to think about too, we gonna have to give the director some kind of guidelines if we decide to do this. Now, you all know as well as I do, and Mr. Glover touched on that about making these kids wear these masks. Now, you telling them and making them, it's two different things. What, where he's gonna have to have some kind of guidance on this is, what do you do when that sixteen year old looks you in the face and I'm not gonna wear it? What, what, where do we go with this? I mean, what are we gonna do with this? Second of all, you say wear a mask, okay, I know well as I that anybody does that. We've got this mask, I'm wearing this one, Lewis is wearing this one, you're gonna have them trying, they're coming there with a fancy looking mask on. Uh, again, we've got to give him some kind of guidelines before we jump into this thing and say, you know, everybody start wearing masks, and then you've got some coming there, you have twenty-five coming there with a fancy looking mask on. You've got to give him guidelines on how we gotta deal with this. Now, I mean, I have no problem with doing masks, I wear them when I'm out myself. Wherever I'm at, like it, I'm out, I go grocery store or whatever, I'm wearing a mask. But we can't just say wear a mask, we've got to have some guidelines to work, to do all this on.
You know, and visitors, do you want visitors wearing them, do you want teachers wearing them in the halls, do you want, you know, D classes and everything like?
He's got to have guidelines on what, when he goes in there and tells his faculty, all of his principals, okay, when you go in back to school, you're gonna tell these teachers they've got to do this, 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 and this, that's what the board has approved for you to do. That way, we're all on one page, nobody, we're not on two or three different pages here. Every, when the director tells every principal what he's, he or she is going to do, then he goes in, he or she goes into that school and tells those teachers what he or she is going to do. Mr. Jones?
Well, we're, we're, we're looking at one thing, we're talking about CDC guidelines and we're trying to follow these, and we should be mindful of them, but how many other illnesses do we overlook the CDC guidelines, the flu and everything else that we never discussed? And I realize that the outbreak is not as big to you, but we're not even taking consideration CDC guidelines for the flu. Uh, one of the guidelines for the flu is you're supposed to get a shot every year, that's what they recommend. We're not making people get shots, so why we gonna make them wear a mask?
And also have passing the flu too, wear a mask.
It, it would, but we, we didn't, we're not taking that into consideration, we're talking about virus, that, uh, we're, we're forcing healthy people to take precautions for the unhealthy, and, and I know it's, it's in the, uh, um, good faith of us trying to keep everybody as healthy as we can. We're gonna be in in all sports if, if we mandate this, I mean, sports will be done, I mean, you can't, the basketball, the mask, I don't know, you can't do anything else, and then you have people passing out just for not being able to breathe.
What about, what about the, uh, the parents that absolutely doesn't want their kids to wear masks? Are we gonna let them go virtual? I mean, well, I mean, there's a lot of questions here.
And, yeah, and, and if you, you can't, you, once you get into there, like Angel, it just takes me a really good day, so you don't care about, you know, we'll end up with a lot of medical exemptions, you know, but it, but you've got to understand, your virtual licensing stuff's done bought. You know, they, you probably force them in, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but they'd probably look at a homeschool or a, um, some kind of a medical exemption so that you get on, uh, homebound, you know, it'd be a possibility.
Mr. Wayne, do you want to?
Oh, I want to leave, what, the motion Mr. Apple made is perfectly appropriate, and one that Mr. Lewis seconded is perfectly appropriate, that's not what this is about, but you are under the discussion section of your agenda. Uh, this is obviously an issue that will touch every student, every teacher, every, every parent in the public. I would recommend that this be a new business item, if the board intends to vote on this. Um, if that means you have to have a special call before school resumes, then that, you know, just what you have to do. Uh, that would allow some more time for study and, and possibly some, some guidelines as to what you had in mind as well, but I'm not saying that to say when the motion Mr. Apple made is perfectly appropriate, perfectly within the purview of this board, to do, you were setting a system wide rule. And that is perfectly appropriate, but I do think it probably, as it touches everywhere, and it is under the discussion at this point, it likely does need to be a new business item. Uh, your next meeting is, I suppose, January the nineteenth, if that's too late. The chairman has every authority to call a special call with one item on the agenda, and that can be clearly stated, so that, you know, there's, everyone's on notice as to what this board is gonna consider, um, but I would recommend that it be a new business item, because I think it's, it's certainly that important, that your, your intent to set a system wide rule at this point.
And if that's something you did choose to do as a board, you would, you would have to give me and staff time to get, to get a kind of, what's something to present back to you and the guidelines, right?
I got a, I got a question.
Yes.
Uh, say, uh, my kid is sitting next to Suzie Q over here, my kid's wore the mask the whole time, Suzie Q gets the, uh, uh, COVID, is my kid gonna be quarantined now, but she's been wearing a mask, that's supposed to keep them from.
So you see guidelines doesn't recognize whether you got one on or off, or something like that?
Correct, so it, I mean, it doesn't keep, it keeps them getting quarantined either way?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just, just, just to clarify now, ladies and gentlemen, the, the, as I said, I, I seconded this so we could have this discussion. Not, not saying I'm intending on whatever, I just, I, I, I just think that the entire board, like Mr. Jones, and Mr. Apple, Marty and everybody else in here, and, and Randy, you know, it needs to have the opportunity to express their feelings on that while we're on that topic, of course, we can't do that without a second, so, you know, here we are. But, you know, I, I just want to hear what everybody's got to think, I, I think, you know, Mr. Apple has a point, it has some validity to it, I understand what Mr. Jones is saying, well, it's got to have some point to be related to it. But I just think, for me, I, I wanted to hear from all the board members about their opinions, uh, that's the whole point for a second, so you can have some discussion about it.
Um, you know, you have, uh, Mr. Jones?
Um, Mr. Wayne?
Yes, sir.
For this to be tables for, for the next meeting, it would have to come from, from first to the second, or?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir, because the motion's on the floor, but, but again, I would highly recommend that this be a new business item, as you said.
But it would have to be from, I guess, motion made of the second.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Glover, you got anything you want to add?
No, I mean, I wear a mask every day because the, the state requires me to wear one in the courthouse. Uh, if they didn't require me one, I probably wouldn't wear one. Uh, you know, I'm not a big pusher for it, and I think it's, it should be a choice. Uh, but if it's not gonna keep my kid from being quarantined, I really don't care for her wearing it. I want my kid in school and it's not gonna hurt her either way.
Okay, we've had a, we've got a motion in second, we've discussed this, so we're gonna have to vote on this, and if you're not in for it, then vote no. If you're for it, vote yes, or you can remove your second and you can remove your motion, either one.
Can I ask another question? I'll let me draw this out, Mr. Chairman, is that all?
Yes, yes, sir, go right ahead.
Uh, again, I mean, we're all sitting here, it, is it just, I mean, does no other board member have an opinion? Because I'd sure love to hear what it is, um, there's just a handful of us talking about it, and I, I'd love to hear from everybody, I mean, you know, does anybody have an opinion? It, there's not a right or wrong opinion, it's not like pass fail, I just want to know how everybody feels about it, you know what I mean?
Tommy, Tommy had something. I just think if the kids come in with a mask on, once they get to their room, if they're going this route, they'll take it off. If they leave to go down the hall, put your mask on. I just don't think a child would have their mask all day. That's my opinion.
Yes, Mark, go ahead.
Uh, my opinion is, and it's strictly my opinion, that's why, you know, the, the mask, if, if we knew that they worked, it'd be a no brainer. And, you know, I had COVID in my house, my wife had it, and I had a son there, and he didn't get it. And he didn't wear my, my mask, but we kept him upstairs and we stayed downstairs, but we passed in the house, so we were, you know, but we wasn't just, we were socially staying apart. And I'm like Mr. Jones here, when he said, you know, the, if we're gonna go a hundred percent CDC rules, then, you know, you could be so busy about being prepared that you couldn't get no work done at school, you know, but I, I do think there's better, I like the social distancing now, the, the new schedule we got at school with this kids being, um, separated, and, and that, that's gonna help, you know, but there, I, I just, I'm sort of like Tommy. I got a problem trying to make a kid, you know, I'd hate to know when I was a senior so much that you gonna wear this, I'd hate to know how to be now, I know how I am now, I hate, I know how I be then, I, I try to book the system, you know. I'd, I'd either break the string or, you know, I'm just trying to be real about it, Scotty, I'm just trying to say, there's kids out there, you're not gonna make them work. And if that's the, if that gets them sent home, then that's a good excuse to go home, I'm gonna go home, you know, so I, I, I don't know if that's the right thing to do, if I thought it did, then I'd be a hundred percent for it, but it, I think we just need to, you know, discuss this and see what the other, see what their other options are.
Again, that's my point, I just, I wanted to hear what everybody has had to say.
And, and we, we have kids that wear masks all day, every day, we have some in our school system right now, I can think of several, and, uh, you know, it, it's a choice that their parents made for them to do, and I feel like that's what we need to leave it for as, as a choice for the parents for their, the health of their own child.
You think anybody else? We're gonna have to vote on this because we have a motion in second, and I think do a roll call on this, I don't have anything from anybody else. Mr. Apple, you have anything else? Nobody else? Anybody? We think do a roll call on this?
On the mandate mask, right?
Yes, the mandate mask.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
He made the motion for the sake of discussion.
Yeah.
He didn't make the motion as sake to approve the vote on it, so you'd have to go back, I believe, and ask Mr. Lewis if he wanted change his second to a second, he, he made the motion for the sake of discussion.
Discussion, discussion only, okay, so we don't have a second yet, does anybody, uh, you not, you did not second Mr. Apples, you just seconded for discussion, correct?
I, I seconded it as to allow, because we could not have a second discussion without him, and, uh, that's just answer a second.
All right, on the floor, we got Mr. Apple's motion, do I have a second on it?
The, and you're saying the second would be to?
Vote to do this, to mandate masks, right?
Mask for children and employees.
For the whole school system, yes.
Is that correct?
Motion's gonna fail with it, for lack of a second. We're gonna need to go on now to, yes, Mr., go ahead.
If they're done, y'all have any more questions on what I was on as far as the spread, you know? One thing that we talked, we touched a little bit on this last month. Uh, uh, I've asked Mr. Ryan to come here and, and, and present this, it's what's been installed in here when you asked us to solicit different stuff. And I, I hope I always say it's correct, anonymization program, and basically, I'm gonna give you the, my version of it, it's, it's a, it's, it's like basically a bigger version of what's in the airlines right now, and after, it's kind of funny, after you looked at, I saw it on some different stuff on TV. And what it does, he's gonna get much more detail, but it, but it basically shocks the air, the atoms that comes through and draws them together, I don't know if it's working or not, I hate to jinx it, but we've not had anybody sick, and I told you today, we've not had anybody sick in the central office, I don't know if it's working or not working. But I don't think the study's not complete yet, correct? Because, uh, Caleb hadn't, you got to figure it all out, but at that point, if you, I'd like to turn it over to you unless you've got a question, this is what we've installed here. Marty, when you asked time before, I asked to look at some different stuff, uh, but I'm gonna turn it over to him, let him do their job explaining, and I did.
You want me to?
Whatever you feel most comfortable.
This okay, your opinion okay?
Yeah.
Stand, sit?
Yeah. And that's strictly whatever you feel good about.
Okay, uh, okay. Sit, stand. Uh, I think I need that, unless, okay. Um, my name's Ryan Ball, I'm with Johnson patrols, uh, I, I've been a part of the school district for probably about four years now, I know Mr. Smith, Mr. Nixon, uh, board members, new and present, um, we've been a part of kind of improving the infrastructure in the school district. Um, still, still working on a lot of things, right? Um, part of, I, I kind of joked about this earlier on about, we're kind of married through the whole, you know, next several years as part of this agreement. And as part of that agreement, I mean, I, I feel it's, it's, um, when we come across new technologies and, uh, in the HVAC world and purification, for example, to, to share that with people, um, I also, we have COVID calls, we have a national K twelve director in Memphis, and we have uh, K twelve calls about once every two weeks, and in particular over COVID, so we talk about other school districts, what they're doing, uh, how they're dealing with COVID, what, as a matter of fact, uh, there's a website that talks about, if you want to look in the state of Tennessee, if they're mandating masks, if they have a full, uh, uh, athletic program, uh, Murray County actually just, just started mandating masks. All this time, they had not had any, uh, masks, had not, had, had not seen an increase in COVID. So now they've recently kind of gone to that, I don't know why, but if, if you're interested in that information, I sent Barry the link, uh, that you can look at any state, look at what they're doing. That's pretty interesting, so this is information that's out there for you to really see who else and, and what they're doing. Now, what we're talking about, what I want to maybe kind of show you is the science behind the, this air purification system, there's a lot of discussions, um, you know, and I feel for you because it's like you can almost turn on a different news channel when someone has an opinion, and you're kind of like, which way do I go, right? So, um, what, what we're looking at and what we put in, um, there's really a couple alternatives, uh, from. So, um, what, what we're looking at and what we put in, um, there's really a couple alternatives, uh, from CDC, from Ashray, which is the engineering kind of, you know, model. Uh, and, and what they're talking about is increasing fresh air into your buildings. They're talking about different types of filters to make them a little more, you know, the, it's a MIR-13 rating filter, right? So it's, it's, it's cleaning the air better. And then there's either UV lighting, or there's bipolar ionization. Um, I'm a little more partial to this ionization just because of the upkeep and cost and results. And so we're gonna get into that just a little bit, but, um, this is an opinion, this is lab results that was conducted, and we've got some data to show that. Um, and, and as, as indicated, we had installed these. Um, so if you think, look at these diffusers in the ceiling here, um, this room is getting a ton of, of positively charged ions in this space, attracting all the pathogens, bacteria, mold, uh, all that airborne particles, that particular, it is turning it into water vapor and dissipating in the air. Um, so let's, let's kind of get through this, and I'll talk more about it, but I'm not a scientist, but, um, the group that we're working with, they got a lot of smart people that, that have really proven, uh, by, by the science that this is working, uh, and, and also show you kind of where they're doing this. So, um, one of the discussions that we had, now again, you can, you can go about this a number of different ways, but what we talked about was really just kind of focusing on like the high traffic areas. Cafeterias, front office spaces, where there's gonna be kind of a group of students around, where there's gonna be probably the, the highest potential for, uh, someone to contract COVID based on, uh, the, the air pollution, right? Um, let me see, so, so we installed it initially here for, for units we have, and again, it's based on the equipment, based on the number, you know, the size of the unit and the concentration of ions that you wanna kind of put into the space. And in my mind, I always think of it as like, it's a, if you had a, a bubble making machine and it's blowing through the filter, it's coming down here, and all these bubbles are coming into the room. Those bubbles are what's attracting all that bad bacteria. Um, so let's, let's keep going on to the next one here, we'll get into it a little bit. So, again, you might have heard of UV lighting and, and kind of the pros and cons, and, and I just wanted to kind of talk about, bipolar is active, which means it's, it's pushing these ions out. For UV lighting, you know, you, you, it's shining down and the, and the bad bacteria has to kind of go through it for it to work. So I think as far as coverage purposes, the ionization is, is gonna get a little more kind of into everything, on top of the surfaces, everything, right? Um, it's a little to no maintenance, it self cleans UV light, um, you gotta replace those bulbs, and, and there's a number of, of things I can't even read, uh, on the chart there, but it's basically just comparing it to UV light. Um, and, and as Barry indicated, uh, the FAA has, has authorized this type of, uh, program on all commercial airlines, and they've been doing it for years. So if you're on an airplane and it smells fresh, um, there's a reason for that unless you happen to get lucky and sit next to somebody that's not so fresh, uh, which we probably all have. So, uh, anyway, pretty proven program, FAA's already proved it, it's going on now. Again, um, we're leaning a little more toward the ionization over UV lighting just because of the upkeep and the costs. Let's go on to the next one. Um, so, so really, how does it work? And let's, 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 I'm gonna really do a poor job explaining everything, but I, I found a video, uh, from this company, and it's very short, but it kind of animates how this all works. If you mind if we can click on that link and pull that little video up there? Cross my fingers, I hope everything works and volume and everything, let's see if this will go. What does that rule tell him about trying it before you present? I apologize. Dave, you wanna take the part of the male and I'll be the female, it's kind of?
Yeah, I'll be the male.
You'll be male? There's a master volume.
Does it sound through in 24 hours?
Whenever the unit is blowing air, so it goes through, uh, this like invisible, is that bar up there, uh?
Sorry.
So yeah, when the users are pushed, when the air is on, it's pushing through this, uh, wall, and those ions are pushed into the space.
But the bar ain't running, it's just, uh?
Correct, correct. Well, all right.
Thank God this line shut, thank you, the microphone just passed through.
I'm sorry, I can send y'all a link if you'd like to. You guys have my card right there in, in front of you, if you need to, to reach me. But we can, let's, let's, so we can talk about this. So basically, I'll just kind of read this, I haven't seen this in a while, but, you know, it, so it creates this cold plasma discharge with consistently positive and negative ions into the space, right? So it clusters around these micro, micro particles and gases, right? Y'all can all read this. Um, so essentially, in, in that diagram in the bottom right there, it kind of shows the, uh, you know, the bacteria and all these ions basically around that bacteria absorbing into it, and then it turns it into water vapor and returns it into the air. So as far as a safe space, when you have all these diffusers in here and you have all this air pushing down in here, there is a ton of material coming in this room right now, and in the board of ed office in general. Um, and so we, we put that in here to test it. Now, we do a, a pre-post and a pre and post measurement of ions before, now ions are negative, are, are happening in the environment all the time. So what we did was we measured it prior to installing this, and then we measured it, we went and measured it afterwards. We also sent a lot of the bacteria results to a lab to have it tested as well, because again, we're gonna drive this decision based on the data and the science. If it doesn't work, then we know, right? Um, the company is pretty confident that we're gonna have some very, uh, exciting results due to COVID. Uh, their lab techs have been kind of out, so we weren't able to get this back in time. But I, as soon as I did that, I'll forward it on to Mr. Smith, and he can share with the group, but I'm really excited. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna put this up at my house. I, it's, the science behind it is very nice, it's very inexpensive, and, and we'll talk about it. Instead of just trying to pull out the air what we think is gonna work, but the other thing I want, let's go on to the next slide, I'm gonna get ahead of myself. Um, I had a hand up, let's, this is some of the lab results, it talks about, uh, COVID, the virus, that within 30 minutes, it had, had pretty much killed ninety-nine percent of the virus, within 30 minutes in a confined space. This is a, a lab that tested it. So, um, let's go on to the next. Uh, this is what kind of the devices look like, uh, the quantities at, at the schools. So again, we didn't look at the whole school district, well, we did, but we looked at just, you know, spaces where we think might have the highest concentration, the cafeteria where all the kids are kind of gathering, and we can, we can change this, I mean, this was just something we're thinking about, you know, let's, let's really focus on, you know, where the, the issues could, could happen. Um, if you wanted to go in every piece of equipment, every room, every, you know, that number rose to, it was around three hundred and fifty thousand or so. So we figured, hey, you know what, let's, let's, let's just see what this looks like, if you're interested in it. I was hoping the results would have really showed us what we're working with. Uh, the other thing that I, I wanted to mention too, when this COVID goes away, flu, bacteria, mold, anything in the air, this will zap that, right? It'll, it'll, anything that you're, pathogens, anything in the air, it will, it will, it will, uh, the science, it will evaporate it, which is very impressive. I mean, this is something that we haven't had around, I didn't know about it quite honestly until COVID, but hospitals have been doing this for a while now. Um, so I think we're, we're getting involved in, and you've probably heard of types of air purification systems that are out there. This is one of the bigger companies, they've got an office here in Nashville, and so, uh, you know, this is some kind of the Johnson Controls pricing, this is a very, uh, it's about a third what we were getting before when we were talking about air purification. So this newer company is quite a bit more, uh, uh, cost effective.
When the germs go through, what, what percentage does it kill, I mean?
COVID, it killed ninety-nine point four percent within 30 minutes of a contained controlled lab space. It has a list of all the S1, N1, it had a list of all the different bacteria that they have done lab, uh, results on, and it has shown what the hundred percent accuracy of killing. So it had, it's very effective. And again, it's, it's, uh, you know, it's at a molecular level. I mean, it's, it's, it's the science behind it. So that's why I think really kind of interested us, when we started looking at it, you can, you can put on a crazy air filter and push air through, and it'll, it'll catch some of the stuff. But as you're pulling outside air in through your system, and it's going down into your school system, it's cleaning that air, and then it's going into your space, and then that space is carrying it back through a return, and it's going back through that system again. So you've got this constant cycle of cleaning the air every time that unit is on, heat and cold, whatever, it's cleaning that air all the time. So, you, you know, that first pass of 30 minutes, it's, it's killed. Well, guess what? It's coming again. So it's, it's a constant cycle of, of, of the molecules doing their, the ions doing their job in the air.
Have you seen this demo, did you see this demo somewhere, like?
Well, we're, yeah, how I heard about it, uh, we were doing it at a, in Florida at a housing, uh, district. Um, and I, I mean, it was turned on to it because of the price, because I, you know, we had presented a similar at another school district, and it was quite expensive. Um, and at some point, there was only so much CARES money to go around, and it, it, we recovered. So, um, school districts are really trying to do what they, the best that they can with the money that they have, whether it's masks, or social distancing, or, you know, uh, petitions and so forth. So everybody's trying to do what they, what they can, but, but ultimately, everybody's just trying to figure this out. Um, out in western Tennessee, there's a few school districts that have already done ionization, and in particular, one district that we did, I was talking to a superintendent, a friend of mine, and she was like, we're, our cases are quite low. Um, and again, is it because of this? I don't know, is it because they, social distance, I don't know, but the science shows that it, within, without a doubt, is killing this, this, uh, bad bacteria. And, and again, I live in Wilson County, but, uh, you know, we're out with flu, I mean, I think before COVID, we were out a couple weeks because of flu. So this is something that can also, you know, again, think about the dollars being spent. When COVID goes away, you're investing dollars in something right now, is that, how is that gonna help you a year from now? Where this technology is costing you a little bit right now, and it's, it's self cleaning, it doesn't wear out. Uh, and then if you have to change out a unit, you can reattach that to a newer unit, so the technology stays with it. And, and again, I'm, I'm really amazed by it, I'm surprised that everybody should be doing this.
In the, in, in those districts where it's used now?
Yeah.
Uh, did they just put it in like the caf, the main areas, or did they put it throughout the scope?
They put it everywhere, but they, they had some CARES money, and, and the county actually, uh, gave them on, on top of the, the money for the school districts. And it gets different in each district, some, some people just, you know, they have different funding, you know, opportunities to do that.
But this is not even the technology, this has been out.
I know.
I, I can remember in the nineties, honestly, like when you could buy this stuff to put through cigarette lighter in your pickup truck, and it worked.
Yeah, it's, I, and, and again, this is something, if you think about just the flu in general, right? I mean, teachers out of work and, 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 you know, this is a security blanket for the school district, to make sure you're doing everything you can to ensure that students are coming on, on campus, and it's a safe environment. Um, it's just another piece of science to help support your efforts to make this, you know, a, a place to come and learn. Um, so really, there's no real downside to it. Um, if I had the lab results, I'd love to show you exactly the upside to it, and, and I, I would say not to make a decision on anything until we, we see the results, because it could very well not be enough to show that it, it warrants any, uh, any type of decision, but I'm really anxious to see it. And again, from where this has been installed, it, um, it's got a lot of support, I mean, maybe the next page I think has, here, again, this is, uh, the trusted reputation, some of these, uh, hospitals, Harvard, I mean, some of these, Google uses it. Uh, pretty big companies, uh, and when I talk to the company about other places they're doing this apparently, again, a lot of people are already doing it and, and have been doing it. So, um, I'm just surprised that, you know, again, Johnson Controls, we do a lot of technology, uh, and, and in fact, we've done some of the UV, and some of the hospitals that we work on, but as far as the cost and benefit for something like this, it's, uh, it's hard to, you know, to at least supplement what you're also doing to help with masks and distancing. It's something that is, uh, it can't hurt, is what I guess we're trying to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Life expectancy of the unit.
Lifetime.
Lifetime.
Yeah, there's, UV light, that was one of the, again, the ions that attracted me was the bulbs burn out, replace a bulb, or they dissipate, right? The, the effectiveness of the UV light, you know, goes down, just like an LED light bulb, it'll not go out, but it just loses its, its brightness, same with the UV light bulb. This, this is a lifetime, uh, again, I, it's hard to believe, you know, something that's lifetime, but they stand behind it, this, this GPS company.
So what you're, what you're telling us, and I'm gonna turn this here because I don't hear real well out there, because it sounded a little bit too good to be true, but, um, what, what you're saying to this body is, if we implement something like this, the technology or the device has an expectation of operating for a lifetime, and can be transferred from unit to unit, whenever central units go down or whatever, we can transfer that device to a new unit without any issues and things like that? Am I close to right?
Yes, sir, uh, uh, it depends on the tonnage of that unit, right? So again, it's, if the unit is, if, if you go from a like to like unit, if it's a ten ton unit, then it's about the concentration of ions that, that come from that, from this. So they have different sizes, they, uh, we go back a few slides, and we can break down like, um, the, where it had the picture of all the, so the, the GPS, the IMOD, the FC2, the quantities there, those are because of the different types of mechanical equipment up on the roof or in the space. Um, so based on the size of that equipment, yeah, if you need to pull it off of a, a one particular unit and move it to another unit, um, I think it's, it's simple, I mean, if you look at the piece of equipment, it doesn't look, uh, it doesn't look exactly, uh, you know, as, 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 as the way that we're talking about it, but it's wi, hardwired in, uh, and, and then it, it's a plug and play.
What's the cost on this?
The total for, um, to put it in the cafeterias, front offices, and again, depending on the, can we figure it out?
The, the COVID, the room that we're putting kids now, that we got that many procedures, we'll put it in there, and you got, you could put it adjacent maybe to the offices because of the main traffic area is. There was cafeteria, those three areas?
Well, the configuration of the building sometimes.
That's what putting in every building, not every unit, they're just designated the high traffic areas.
Yeah, it's like, uh, I think it was here, I mean, there's some units, or maybe it was the, there are some units that serve more than one room.
Well, there were some of the plots, you know, the ones, some of the.
So whether you might serve that, that COVID room, it might also serve a front office, wherever that, that duck org is leading that out to is where it will serve. And so at a minimum, we wanted a COVID room and a high traffic, you know, front office area, uh, and the cafeteria was, was a couple of the, the ones that we, you know, we had kind of discussed, that might be a, a starting point. But, um, ultimately, I mean, you go every unit, and it obviously increases, you put more ions into the space, but, um, obviously, that's, you know, that's not to me.
Is there any, any type of government or tiered program that offset cost of this available for?
You know, the, the CARES money, um, CO, it's, it's covered, right? So part of the legislation that talked about, um, COVID, you know, uh, technology or, or, or air purification, the HVAC, this, this is included in that, but, I mean, until we know if there's anything else coming, it's probably all that CARES money that you probably all spent. So we're kind of, as, as it is right now, we're not, uh, the only districts and city halls and folks that I've talked with, they, they had used this kind of earlier on. There was a, I think, application deadline to apply for those funds earlier on, and I think, you know, a lot of people bought laptops and, you know, Chromebooks and things like that. Um, and just probably didn't figure this would go on this long, but, um, so.
Any more questions from anyone? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Apple, I do think there would be some, some smaller grants that we route each year. It might be a, like, have we done it over, got we did a security system, this, uh, it might be something we do over a period of time. Here, I do think there'll be some more, I feel like financially, there's gotta be some more coming for something like that. So I think we probably look down the road, I do, um, uh, I guess I'm always skeptical, you know, at the old, uh, uh, you know, I wanna see the, what, before and after, what, if it makes sense. When I went back and researched the empty, for the airline that you didn't, like Marty said, I saw, whether the truck stop, they were usually in semis, you know? A lot of EU, I thought, but you probably was doing that.
Yeah.
So I know it's got some background to it, but I wanna see the real numbers, you know? And then I look back, plus coaching, I bought one of my restroom, it was trick or say, this, well, you said even though it smelled like common cold, that, that kind of thing.
Well, mo, yeah, mold, anything airborne is, is what it.
I wanna see the, I, we can, I wanna see the numbers on it.
I, I left some very direct voicemails the past two days.
It's actually installed in this building, we, we put it in this building, so.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, this room with this much, with this many diffusers in here, you are getting a very high number of, of ions in this space. And if there was a, a safe room, based on that information, this is it, you've got a few in your office, so you're pretty safe too. I don't know about anybody else in the building, but you're safe. Uh, so again, I, I think the lab results will really kind of show, hopefully, something that will, um, you know, lead you to a, to say, you know?
Mr. Lewis, you?
I just, just, uh, and, and you might not have this answer, and I'm sorry, don't mean to keep just making you sit down and stand up.
It's okay.
You can sit down all you want to, it doesn't bother me. Um, I, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, and it sounds like a very promising program, but let's just say, for example, and, and I'm just curious, you may not have the answer, but, but we'll take like the middle school up here, for example, let's just talk about that facility and the, the size of it and all that. Are we, are we conquering anything by placing that in two or three rooms in that building? I mean, it almost sounds like we're putting a Band-Aid on the Titanic. I, I think the, I think the thought process, process and the science behind it has a lot of validity, but, but are we, you know, are we really gonna accomplish anything by putting one or two units in pursuit of that size? Or should we be talking like Mr. Apple says, a two? by putting one or two units in a facility that size, or should we be talking like Mr. Apples says, a tier program, and just, and just do it? I mean, uh, you see what I'm saying?
I agree with you, and, you know, when we initially talked about this, it's, you're right, I mean, it's, you're, you know, what happens with those kids that, they're still gonna interact with other kids, and there's gonna be that, so if, if, if you have a, a vacuum, something in the air, you know, you gotta go to cafeteria to get that, you know, it's not, it's not working, right? So, um, I, I will tell you that, you know, uh, you, the, the way these devices are set up, you could tier in, right? Based on budgets and how you wanted to do it, and again, based on the life expectancy of these units and the ease of maintaining these units, it really, you can, you can, they can put a few in here or there, the, um, the team that we're using to install these, um, they're, they're local, they're, they're, you know, right down the road here, and they're the ones that did all hiding here, and, um, very, very good group, so, um, when the time is right, I, I think that, again, if you can expand on past COVID and think about anything that's in the air that could harm the kids, this is one of the solutions that can, after like flu in particular.
Well, and, and I agree, uh, but I just, uh, you know, I kind of, I kind of like see all of that, I mean, it is an impressive thing, and, and of course, everybody wants an answer to the safest environment, I mean, we're talking about masks a moment ago. I mean, you're gracious, I'd, I'd a lot more see that in place everywhere than people having to wear a mask, but, but I, I, I don't know, you know, Mark, I, you know, if we're just gonna put it in this room and the rest of the building's wide open, have we accomplished anything?
I agree.
You, you see what I'm saying?
I totally agree, yes, sir.
Because the kids are moving back and forth, I'm not against it at all, I, I'm just wondering, should we be considering entire facilities and not just a, a room closet, leave where I stayed it open?
I agree, I totally agree, and I, you know, if, uh, if money wasn't an issue, I think that would be, I think.
Well, money's always an issue.
Yeah, I think, I think, which was part of the theory though, was, you know, if it works, we'd like to do it yourself, and then, but, our theory was thinking if, you know, Cuthbert Smith had it, we'd wait for a parent to pick him up, we'd keep him isolated, kill that virus. At least the hospital lady wanted it in that room, and if we simply liked it with an idea, it's not an issue to build onto the system, correct?
No, they, well, it, it's just per unit, right, wherever there's a mechanical unit, that's right.
I totally agree, if it works, it'd be great to build it new though.
And you, you said, and I'll hush, probably, maybe not, probably not, but, but anyway, and, and nothing to hold you to, but you said, Mark, to, you correct me if I'm wrong, three hundred plus thousand dollars to install this?
I think it was like three forty-eight, something, something like that, for every piece of equipment and every building in the school district would be, would be covered, yes, sir.
That's ever, every school building?
Every school building, every piece of mechanical equipment, everywhere.
Is that covering every room?
Every piece of equipment, if that room has air conditioning, it's covered. If that room closet has air conditioning, it's covered.
Are you getting it, and I'm just asking, for the, the more you buys, is it a better deal?
You know, I, I recently, uh, kind of asked, is, because I, I, I was kind of going on to, like, a lot of people pay attention to Smith County, and we work with a lot of folks in Upper Cumberland. Uh, and, uh, everybody's kind of asking, I mean, I was just in Overton, and, and we're doing jobs in Jackson and Overton, and, uh, and they're, they're kind of waiting to see what y'all do. Um, and that's why I was expecting these lab results to be in, so that we can have something concrete to show. But, uh, I think everybody's really curious about it, and the folks that have already done it, or for some, whether some have done UV, or some, someone's doing something. And, uh, now, we've, what, we've got like ninety-five counties or so, and, um, so there's probably, you know, maybe, that I know of, maybe about twenty counties have, have done something. So there's a lot that, thinking this thing is a hoax and going away, right, but, or masks, but, um, but, but this discussion, I think it's, a lot of people are watching to see really, because again, it's, 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 you know, it's at a molecular level.
What do you work in a basketball gym?
Absolutely, is there air conditioning in the gym?
But, I mean, this machine, it's not, it, it's not the size, it's just, you know, I'm not trying, I'm trying to be technical, not on how to ask it, but it, it, it'll supply whatever filtration system it's in.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be, if, if it's moving ten tons of air through it, or two, I don't know, but, but.
That's correct, yeah, so if, on a, in a gymnasium, you've got, oh, big, um, how much tonnage that is, I don't know, thirty to fifty tons. So the piece of equipment is gonna handle that extra tonnage, and then it's gonna put, you know, you gotta think that, that downforce, and so the, the ions coming from those multiple units, if you're gonna try to cool that space, it's gonna recognize that to put those ions in the space as well. So, uh, bigger unit, bigger piece of equipment, smaller, smaller, and it's, and it's all about just, and again, I gotta, I gotta be clear here. Everything that will be installed, there will be testing on it, right? So it's not just, let's hope, cross our fingers and hope it works, there's gonna be some mechanical tests behind it.
Y'all, are y'all testing it, or the manufacturer?
We're sending it off to the manufacturer, they, they have the lab that, well, not the ma, it's actually, it's a third-party lab, so it's not even the manufacturer, and maybe that's.
They don't have no interest in it, they're just giving it to their dad, right?
Yeah, correct, correct.
We have a lot of walling units in our schools, like football, it's a wall?
Yes, sir, it's called, uh, it's an I-Rib, so these, those PTACs that are in your, in your schools, it lays across that, uh, fan in your classroom. Typically, you have two of those PTACs in each room, and those, they have an eighteen inch and a thirty-two inch, and, and those are, I don't think that we have any of those listed, but the cost on those were, three hundred bucks for the pair, so, so you figure three hundred dollars per classroom, and, uh, it's, again, pretty affordable, I just.
So you're, you're saying lifetime expectancy of the piece of equipment?
The company, yeah.
And then, but, but not just the COVID, of course, that's what's on everybody's mind right now. But, but moving forward is that virus, it gets reined in and control, we're talking about flu, we're talking about mold bacteria, which is extraordinarily dangerous.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, that it would control all of those things, correct, am I, am I saying that right?
You are, I gave, uh, Mr. Smith the printout of all the types of airborne viruses and bacteria that they have tested in a lab, and how effective this equipment has been in, in mitigating all of the, those, that bad bacteria.
So what you're saying is would be in essence, every facility that we had, we'd be creating a, a bubble of protection for every person that was in that building?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me ask you another question, so that I understand. Let's say that Scotty comes to, uh, this room, and, and that I have, uh, contracted COVID, but I'm not symptomatic or anything like that. Will, will call me a carrier. Anything, you know, where I'm breathing or coughing or whatever, it's gonna kill that protect David sitting over there, is that right?
I, I don't, I don't know, I can't answer that honestly, all I know is that in the space, anything in the air, if it comes out of your mouth, uh, and it's airborne, um, it's, the molecules are attracted to that, and that's when it turns it into that vapor. So I, I mean, um, you know, I'm sitting next to David here, and I probably shouldn't, but, uh, you know, but, but, you know, I, 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 that's, I want more science, I want more of that. I mean, that's maybe a question that we can talk about.
I mean, you understand where I'm headed with that.
If someone already has it, and they come into a space, um, that space is gonna be neutralized, uh, and if someone, uh, enters into that space and there's something, uh, I, I don't know what that would do, but I know that if, if there are things that are coming out of you that is in the air, um, I'll tell you right now, if, if you're not bringing in fresh air into the school, you're circulating this bad air right now, and that could very well be a, a big problem.
Are we doing that, David, are we bringing fresh air in the school?
Not in most of them.
Cause I was reading like yesterday on the CDC line, and they said exactly the same thing, in need fresh air.
It just what the units are bringing in itself.
This ionizes the air closet, it mounts.
Yes, sir.
So your air doesn't have to be on, your first doesn't have to be on, you just gotta have an air closet.
Correct.
But your unit's not on running, it's not working, is it?
Correct.
So your unit would have to be put on continuous, I guess it?
They are anyway.
They are.
We don't turn our units off, no, we do scale them back in, in unoccupied times, but we never turn them off.
They're running twenty-four, seven.
They run twenty-four, seven, so when they would come in, when a kid comes in in the morning, they've got a clean bill. And they go to lunch, they come back, they stay gone for thirty minutes, they come back from lunch, they go in their classroom, they got a clean.
Let's just say, for instance, that we're not doing a good job changing our filter, I'm just putting it out, is this unit still working even in front of dirty filters or?
You gotta think about, yeah, if you think about it, it's bringing that outside air in, and it's going through that compressor, that, that air handling unit, and that, that piece of equipment that's set up. So any minute it goes through there, those ions are coming out into the space, whenever that, it's going through that return, that's when you have that filter, whether it's changed or not. So it's already been treated air, now it's getting treated again, and going through that filter and being circulated. So you're bringing in outside air and you're recirculating air, or in this, some cases, you're not bringing in outside air, but you're still cleaning the air as it's circulating. So you, you only double your chances of, of minimizing this risk if you're bringing in more fresh air.
David, can I ask you real quick, I know you, that, that the temperatures in buildings are set, and, and it's another, when, let's say that this room is set at, uh, I don't know, we'll say seventy-two degrees, and then when it reaches that, the circulation stops, correct? Does the fan still function, so air circulates?
It's on automatic, but generally not, they, they stay on a little longer, uh, it just doesn't shut down, but it'll go down, and there's a two degrees when it drops, and when it's a temperature sensor house, then it'll kick back on and run again.
Continue, may drop to.
But it would have to be on continuous, or, it wouldn't, on standby, wouldn't it work more?
Right, and that's what David was saying, and, you know, these, these control systems that you have, even though they're set back, they don't turn completely off. So you might set them back, you know, right now to sixty-eight degrees or so, and in the morning, if you got them set to come on at five in the morning, and, you know, then it'll, it'll kick on, and it'll run until it heats up to the, to that set point. Uh, and then to maintain that set point, as the temperature changes, it will, you know, circle the cycle through, yeah.
This, this is something that I feel like we need to really look into, and if we do that, I think it's something that we, we need for the entire building, not just,
Yeah.
a patch here and a patch there.
Yeah.
I think it's something that we need to, to, to protect all of our kids, and not just the ones that are sick going home.
That's right.
Uh, where, where are we gonna get the money for this, that's, that's the question. Do we have money left in our COVID, do, I mean?
We don't, we don't have any money, our COVID, our grant, like you said, others were spent on computers. There may hope, but there may say, why you come in, this would be something.
If, uh, your county mayor, did he, without, because the county governor got money too, I wonder if that's probably what's going on. Uh, well, I, I heard some, some school districts said that their county mayor, the county mayor had, uh, given them some money too, and I, I mean, you know.
We'll let you go, Tony.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it'll be fun.
But I think after we get back, uh, with the, uh, Mr. Smith, when we get back with the, uh, what's shown, what it's done, then you'll bring it back again, and then we'll, the study, then you'll bring it back, and then we'll discuss further on what we're gonna have to do, how we got to finance it, and all these short things.
Yes, sir. I, I, if, if, if you mind, I, I'd like to, um, I can, I, I, I mean, I'm here quite often, I live thirty minutes away. Um, when I get those results back, I can forward them to Barry, or I can come back for you again and respect work session, whatever you need. And then if you decide you wanna even do a few, or however you want to proceed, the lead time on the equipment is like a week, and then the guys can install it. I mean, it's, they're very, uh, efficient, and so we can move, I mean, if there was a goal to have this even set before kids come back after break, there's a potential that that could happen, um, again, it's just the lead time getting the, the units in, the guys to install it, again, they're, they're very efficient, they can be very quick. Uh, so it's, so I want to fill that out there as, you know, if that's something, or we can, again, save it, you know, what we'd like to do too. The guys work after hours at night, weekends, uh, they're used to it in that.
Well, that can be, that all sounds real good, but like I say, I wanna see the, uh, what the test results are.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, then like I say, we can proceed on how we wanna, what we wanna do, and then far as the money wise, we get to all of that after we get to what the test results come back with, so. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your presentation, you've done an excellent job.
Well, and nice meeting on a new basis, so, uh, nice meeting you, and, and I'm.
Okay, we're gonna go on to the next item here, which is the annual policy review, uh, has everyone had a chance to look at that, any questions on it? If not, uh, do we, uh, Mr. Winkler, need to go on the second session? Okay, we do not need to go in the second, okay, one more reminder, uh, school board retreat will be on Tuesday, January nineteenth. That is mandatory, that everyone of you has to show up, or it does not count. After that, we will begin our, at our regular time at five o'clock, we will start our, uh, board meeting, and as, and I want to, thing I'd like to add, I'd like to wish all of our staff, all, any employee that works for the Board of Education, Mr. Smith, our, uh, school board members, I'd like to wish all of you Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and I hope everybody can stay safe, can stay healthy. And we can all meet back here in January the nineteenth and do this all over again. Do I have any other announcements, anybody gonna say anything?
I'd like to.
Yes, sir.
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and spend time with their families, make sure that you've got some things for you to hang around for a few minutes, and if you don't mind, make sure that Tricia gets some stuff distributed, and take advantage of the food, Jeri, and Tricia, and, and I won't start leaving anybody out, and, and Gina, and these young ladies back here put a lot of time in to prepare their stuff for you, and I appreciate them doing it. And, uh, so please take advantage of the, of the goodies they got for you.
Anything else, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Hold on.
Beverly, motion, Mr. Manning, you still have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Apple? You do that, Mr. Apple.
Mr. Piper.
Mr. Apple, okay, all in favor?
Ah.
Opposed?